Hey, any other queries and updates? Any assignments?
One.
An assignment? You have an assignment?
Yes. So is it possible to get a calendar of all school open houses?
Say that again?
Is it possible to get a calendar of all school open houses? And parent conference dates?
It's not on?
So I only smile when you say that because as a part of the, I feel like maybe there was an email or something that was possibly shared. As a part of our back-to-school information for principals, principals came back to work today. We did ask them to provide their open house date so that we could share them all on the website. And we have asked schools to host all of their open houses by September the 8th. And so they've been asked to update that by the end of the week. As soon as we get that, we'll share it with the board and we'll also put it on the website. And then the same for our parent conference times. I like to think it's great minds thinking alike. You know, it's just something in the air. So that was actually something that someone put on social media and I said that I would ask that question. And then the other assignment that I wanted to look into, and I think I mentioned it in one of our committee meetings, was you had mentioned about having student representation from the superintendent level, like a student board from the superintendent level. But there's also a board-assigned youth voice component. So I wanted to make a formalized assignment to look into that. From your, I don't want to necessarily duplicate. I don't want it to be the same students, but I also, there is an article in OSBA about in Ohio, how several boards got together and they formed a youth voice component. And I wanted to look into that. But I wanted that to align with what you're thinking of. So if we could do some research on that, that'd be great. That's it? Those are the only two things I can say?
I didn't hear me? But don't worry about it. I'll get it. It'll be on record.
Okay.
It's a formal assignment. I'll get it clarified.
But you heard me.
Okay.
Is there a request for the date for the assignment? I would say within fall quarter. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, you had another question? You had an inquiry or an update?
Inquiry. I'm sorry. Yes, there was some confusion regarding athletic trainers for all of our schools. And I know we had some confusion about, I think it was children's was supplying. And then we, you know, were worried about our funding for that service. I just wanted to make sure as we open school, do all of our schools have athletic trainers?
So at this time, all of our schools do not have athletic trainers. The funding was not the issue at this point. We do have an email that is queued for the board to give you some additional background because I do understand that some of the information that's been shared with some of our board members is not accurate based on what's been shared with me by the team. And so we have an email queued for you so that we can send it to you collectively. So we have about six schools right now, I believe, that we're still looking for athletic trainers for, about six of them.
And since we're not, since there's not the relationship or whatever with the children's or whatever, are we now recruiting athletic trainers for those six schools?
We are. And we're also working with about three different agencies as well. TriHealth is one of those that are identifying trainers to work with our students. So we're looking across the board for trainers that we can look for.
A follow-up question?
Sure. I'll be quick.
Go ahead. Thank you, Board Member Eve. I wanted to also ask in terms of the athletic trainer, what is the goal? Is the goal by the time we start school to have these six positions filled? And if we aren't, or if we do not have it filled, will they be able to participate in their sports?
So thank you for the question. So that is the goal. Honestly, I don't know whether or not we will be able to meet that goal by the beginning of the, by the time our practices actually start. But it's something that we're still working on. In terms of students being able to participate, the answer for that would be yes. We do have to have our staff that have first aid as well at the school building. So there has to be someone at the school that is also qualified for CPR and first aid. And we're continuing to look for the actual trainers. I think the information that we can share on what was shared with us earlier, I think it would be appropriate to share it with the board. And if there are other questions from there, we can follow up.
Thank you. Kudos.
You ready for me? I will be quick. This morning, I had the pleasure, let me pull up my little notes here. I was able to attend with Board Member Moffett, the Literacy Labs Leading Men Fellowship. They had an opportunity at the Literacy Lab, which is located within CityLink Center. It was amazing to see the 20 young men who will start this upcoming school year. So it was very exciting to be there, to see them and to hear their story and to really kind of give them some kudos as well. So that's my short. Oh, and yes, Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy was there as well. Sorry about that.
Okay, any other kudos or announcements? That. Okay. All right, just one announcement. Just a reminder, and Superintendent, you might want to speak to this very briefly about the safety panel that's coming up on the 3rd.
Yes, thank you. So our Safety Town Hall is scheduled for this week on Wednesday. It will be here in our ILC. Currently, our panelists include our Interim Chief for the Police Department. We have a representative from the NAACP, a representative from our faith-based community. We have a couple other of our community partners. And we were contacted today by Hamilton County as well to participate also. We have a psychiatrist that will be on the panel as well. So we are looking for a spirited conversation during that time. We will share really where we are as a district and our safety protocols. But we also want to be able to answer questions from the public. We have asked Dr. Moffett if she will moderate the panel for us. And so we will, and we will also be streaming as well. And so we'll be live here in the ILC. We will stream and we will record the discussion. All of the panelists have been informed that the discussion would be recorded so that it can be reviewed at another time also. So it's at 6 o'clock on Wednesday.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, having no other business?
We do have one more. One last one. One last one. We have our CPS, our CPS Back-to-School Cookout on Sunday. And we start on Sunday at 11 o'clock, from 11 to 3 at Washington Park. And so we're asking you to come out. We have our, we have food trucks that are going to provide food for our families that are coming. And it will, we have Metro that will be there with the bus setup to make sure that everyone knows how to utilize their cards and get on the bus. And so we are asking everyone to come out and support us during that time.
I have another inquiry. When would parents and students be expecting to hear from their actual schools as to when they're having their kind of open greet the teacher or come in? Or when would they be getting the information too about buses, on the yellow buses particularly for elementary?
Okay, so two different answers. The first is we will start mailing out cards to families next Tuesday for Metro. The routes, the routes are up now. So we are, in the presentation that we'll have on the 14th, we'll also do a conversation with me and the CEO from Metro where it will be open for families. We'll walk through how to find the information for the bus routes online. That's available now. We just, we're encouraging everyone, when you see the press releases there as well, but we're encouraging everyone to future date it. Because if they don't future date it for the first day of school, they will not see the correct information. So making sure that the future date for the route is the first day of school. But we'll start mailing those next week. As far as families and orientation, we're following up with staff now because some staff, some schools have already sent the information out. Some are in the process of doing that. So that goes along with our open house information. So we should know better by the end of the week when everyone is sending it out.
Okay. Thank you. Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. Good evening. I call to order the August 1st, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Okay, I'm going to read this first. I'm going to read this about the hearing of the public. And then I'm going to turn the meeting over to President Lindy, who is currently with us virtually. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Mr. Lindy?
Ms. Jones, am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Great. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say good evening, everyone, and let you know that I'm away from Cincinnati tonight with my wife's family. And I'll be here for this meeting and the committee, the whole meeting on the 10th. I'm participating virtually, but by state law, I won't be able to vote. And I wanted to extend my sincere thanks to Vice President Jones for leaving these two meetings in my stead. The only other piece I wanted to share was that, to update everyone on our overarching board priorities. Since January, we've done this twice, agreed as a group about what's going to matter most over a two- or three-month period. Our last set of board priorities finished on the 13th of June. And my hope is that by the business meeting on the 15th, we'll be able to vote on a next set of priorities that would carry us through about Halloween time. At this point, I've spoken to almost everyone, or at least gotten the meeting scheduled with almost everybody. I want to thank everyone for connecting with me on this front. Look forward to speaking, I hope, with everybody before the meeting on the 15th so that we can decide together what's going to matter most over these next several months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Anything else before we move on?
Nothing here.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Superintendent Wright, please present your update.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. So during the superintendent's update for this evening, we are going to do a brief update on where we are in thinking about health and safety in specific to COVID. So currently, we are monitoring the spread of COVID-19 through guidance from CDC and our Health Department. In preparation for the opening of school, we will be utilizing all communication channels to keep everyone updated and abreast of any changes. And our Health Department is actually the Hamilton County Health Department. And so that's who we meet with. We meet with them weekly, with our team, to review where we are currently as a community and any recommendations that are coming from the Health Department. Data shared with the community through the Health Department represents the community COVID-19 data and may be accessed from our district's website at CoronavirusDisease2019. So if you go to our website, there is a link there that says COVID, coronavirus. And I'm going to ask my team if we'll just click on that link for me for one moment so that we show you exactly where you can access this information on the site. Okay, so we're, so if you go to our website, you're able to access it right at our website. And there is a link that shows COVID. Go to the link and it gives all of the information that we're overviewing today. So on the site, the district developed a district safety plan in collaboration with the Health Department and Children's Hospital. It includes guidance from the CDC on school operations and has been updated to reflect the latest information. The link to all COVID-related information is highlighted on the slide that you see on the screen currently. So at the bottom of our homepage, there is a radio button there that says COVID. You can click on that button. It will take you to all of the information that we're discussing, as well as cases across the city and cases that have been identified as connected to school buildings. Where are we currently with masks? And this is a question that has come up now for us, probably since about last Thursday, we began to receive more questions about where we are with masks. And as a board, we have elected, as a part of the recommendation from CDC, when you go to the CDC site, having worked with this now since about March of 2020, CDC recommends that you follow the guidance of your local Health Department. So everything that we have done up to this point has been in coordination with our local Health Department. And based on our current guidance, masks are still optional. And so as an administration, we would not be recommending masks to the board at this point because as we look at the data that is being provided across the city, the recommendation from the Health Department is that masks are still optional. And this is also in alignment with our local government, who is also following the guidance of our Health Department. For our board policy as well, and I do think it's relevant for us to share in Board Policy 5321, where there is the risk of COVID-19 is unsafely high, the administration shall inform the board and recommend requiring masks. And that, again, that is done, that recommendation from the administration is done in collaboration with our Health Department. Currently, there are locations and instances on campuses where masks are expected and required. And of course, that would be if we are in any of our school-based health centers, in the nurse's office, if there's an individual that tests positive and they're up through day 10, they're still expected to wear masks, and individuals that are symptomatic or they've not tested through day 10. So in those instances, individuals are required to wear masks. However, across the district, we have not made the recommendation, nor has the board acted on making masks required at this time. It is always an option. We want to make sure that this is clear to everyone, to our parents, to our staff, and to our community, that at any time that an individual chooses to wear a mask that includes our staff, they are encouraged to do so and they're welcome to do so. In terms of cleaning, each of our locations is disinfected daily. As a precaution, each building, classroom, office is sprayed with an electrostatic sprayer, and that happens at least monthly. And that's recommended through CDC as we look at mitigation strategies for COVID-19. If there is a confirmed case in a building, in a location, in an office, then there is an additional cleaning and disinfecting that happens at that location with the same thing. So there's regular disinfecting and there's also disinfecting from the electrostatic sprayer as well. Regular procedures, and just as a reminder, and I know this information has been shared with the public previously, but just through our regular procedures, contract tracing is conducted for all positive cases. It is done in collaboration with the Health Department. So that is not something that we do in isolation. We continue to do that work with the Health Department. County levels are monitored and individual cases are monitored daily through the CPS COVID-19 report dashboard. So if you were to go to our website right now and you click on that dashboard, you will notice that you don't see any cases at all there for staff. So that simply means that staff have not tested in our locations and responded to the test. But you do see locations there that identify testing positive cases as of last week for students, a very, very low number. But these are students that were tested at children's. And so anytime the agreement with the, with children is that when our students test at children's, it automatically goes into our Student Information System database and it gets uploaded into this information. And that's relevant because we don't have school right now. So we don't have students in school. But when you go to the dashboard, you would see students that were connected to schools, and that's where those numbers come from. Also, our Health Team meets weekly with the Health Department to review cases, updates, and any additional recommendations. So as we think about monitoring the spread of COVID in schools, and we look at the different levels of the spread, medium and high, one of the areas that have been discussed previously, and a rule of thumb, if you will, that the district had begun to use was thinking about when we would look at doing closure in schools or what the procedures were that we would do next. And so at medium, more than 5% of the staff and enrolled students in a cohort tested positive. And then at high, it was more than 10% of staff or enrolled students in schools in the cohort testing positive in the past 14 days. When the conversation came to closure, it really, the number that was used during that time was right around 20%. And based on our team, that really became more about being able to staff the school, have individuals that were in the school to cover the school building, really than it was about the spread of COVID in the building. So want to make sure that we are clear that we are still monitoring in this way and we will continue to have all lines of communication open. And again, we want to highlight our board policy, Board Policy 5321. And here it discusses recommending the requirement of masks. And 5322 recommends the requiring of unvaccinated employees and co-located employees to submit to weekly testing. So we wanted to make sure that the community does have that information and you're able to go back and review that. One of the reasons that we did want to make sure that we shared this information tonight is that we know that there have been some questions. And we really want you to know that this is an area that we are continuing to monitor as a team. Should there be changes that require something different, we will share that information. We will communicate that just as quickly as possible with all of our stakeholders. Next steps, our safety plan will continue to be reviewed. Updates will be made as new information becomes available. We will continue our collaboration. Right now, there has been just a, the meetings have not been as frequent, but those meetings pick back up now with the weekly meetings each Friday morning at 7:30. So our staff is on that call to make sure that we are in alignment with the recommendations across the city. And messaging is really important. So making sure that we're messaging any of the information that we have with our employees as they are returning to buildings, and we're messaging that information to parents as well. And then we continue to use all communication channels to do that. And as we talk about all communication channels, that's from our board meetings to our blast that we would send to parents, to information on our website, to information that we put on social media. So we will ask that you engage with us in all of those platforms. All of our social media sites are quickly, quickly updated. And that is really a good way to engage with us as well. And I think that is the end, unless there are questions for me from the board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you for a very comprehensive report. Questions and brief comments for the Superintendent? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Thank you for the presentation too. Obviously, you've been hearing a lot of rumbling and whether we're going to do masks or we're going to do this. So, and I believe I heard it right, but just to put a pin on it for the public and everybody else, we're going to use the same triggers that we were using regarding masking or vaccination. I mean, the 20% piece was for closure, which I don't even want to talk about that. But for masking and for vaccinations, is that trigger the same? Or I imagine it'd be a little before that? Or are we going to?
Right. So one of the things that was shared with me by the team is that there was not a specific percentage number that was given around masks. There were some that remembered it a different way. But for the most part, what the team has shared, the ones that were responsible for doing the presentations, is that there was not a specific number that was given around masks. Now, you know, we may be able to go back somewhere and find something different, but that's at least what's been shared at this point. That the 20% number was really more about the closing of schools than it was specific to the wearing of masks. So our recommendation at this point would be to stay in collaboration with the Health Department to determine what the recommendation is for the city from the Health Department and then make those recommendations to the board based on that, as well as what we're seeing within our school buildings in terms of testing and spread.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for the report. And like the member Morosky, hearing lots of talk in a community about what the CPS is going to be doing. Two things, I appreciate you mentioning the reason, the majority of the reason that we closed on occasion was really an issue of staff attendance rather than necessarily our buildings being unhealthy or unsafe. I think that needs to be emphasized. And seems like that should be less now in some ways. The other, the other piece of it for, are we, do we think in terms of highly recommending masks? Is there a, is there a kind of a transition? Or will it just be no masks until your own volition? And then the third thing, I think we finally came to a resolution about not having district-wide closure, but indeed closure where it was required, building by building or what have you. So just wanted to reiterate that if you could.
Definitely. And that has been the conversation at this point with the team, to answer the latter first. When we look individually at schools and where we see a spread at a school building, then in partnership with the Health Department, we would make the recommendation for closure only in that location. Because what we find is across the district, as we look at the data even from last year, you don't see the same kind of concentration across the board. So it becomes the most appropriate to look at those individual locations than doing something blanketly across the board. In terms of the recommendation for masks, I think there are a variety of schools have thought on it. And so I think at this point, our recommendation would be to follow the guidance that's being done by the Health Department, which says that it's recommended. But there hasn't been a requirement at this point. And so we would, we would look to move forward in terms of that. We do still have masks available. We have them available in our school buildings. We have them available as individuals are coming into our offices. We know that today was the first day back for principals. Our teachers don't return until the 12th. So at the end of this week, we'll be looking again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Superintendent, for your update.
Vice President Jones, can I ask one question?
Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Thanks so much. I wanted to echo the thanks for the superintendent's presentation. And I love that we're being proactive and sharing, even before staff have come back, before kids have come back, our plans for the year. Superintendent, could you just address if somebody is looking at the website for the CDC and they're reading that according to the CDC, Hamilton County in Ohio appears to be high in terms of its level of COVID transmission? And that the CDC website is recommending that? I happen to fully support the approach that we're taking as a district. Can you just say a little bit more about how to square what someone might read on the CDC website with what your recommendation is and why we're supporting it?
Yes. So on the CDC website, you do see across any county in the state, in the state and across the country by state, you can select on the state and select on the county, and it will give you a number or a percentage or a range, low, medium, or high, based on what happened in that area within the last 10 to 14 days. And that is based on the community and community spread. So I want to share that to start with. You will also find, however, on the CDC site, that the consistent recommendation is to follow the guidance of your local Health Department. So while those may be numbers that might be presented on the overall website, the additional recommendation is to follow the guidance of your local Health Department. And we're in alignment with the guidance from our local Health Department.
That's great. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much again. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay. So we are now at the item on our agenda for Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel item. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. Mr. Hoin? How many speakers?
Yes, this evening, we just have one in-person speaker, Mr. Wells.
Mr. Wells? Have you come down to the podium here?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Chief Burnett Wells, Harrington Wells, from Metro Security and Detective Agency. I've been in business since 1984. Served locally on Cincinnati for a while, Dayton Police, three years with the federal government. Over the years, I have tried, probably over the past 30 years, to provide CPS with some form of patrol service. I participated in your interview where your purchasing department had a mass media-type thing so you can speak publicly, not publicly, but so much back to the CPS, to your purchasing department. Over the years, I haven't received any callbacks. I've worked briefly, probably two years up under Mary Ronan, different administration, with your security director, Ralph Ruin. And I'm currently in contact with your And I'm currently in contact with your current, William Bale, I think is his name. And I've submitted a number of proposals for how my agency could help CPS. Most recently, there was an article in the Cincinnati Enquirer about the ACLU. Some of my work that I've done in the past is directly correlated with that in terms of the amount of persons or our students that are being referred down to 800 Broadway. And the information and the things that I researched back in that, up under Ms. Ronan, Ronan, Mayor Ronan, that I think that information would be helpful at this time to present to the current Superintendent and also to the rest of board members. And I've spoken exclusively with William Bale, I think it is, and also with different persons in your purchasing department. However, over the past 30 years, I think just one opportunity has come up with, including with your patrol service, I have investigative services and also enough men and our women to provide physical security at your games, basketball games, to assist the police department, armed or unarmed.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, two minutes. However, Will, you're the only speaker, so I'm going to waive it and allow you to finish your thought. I didn't want to cut you off in mid-sentence, but if you could finish your thought and then we'll.
Licensed through Homeland Security, as I said, through, for, since 1984 and served the public and military for a long period of time.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on, we, we are at the item on the agenda for approval of minutes. However, I was informed prior to the meeting that there are errors in the, in both of those meeting documents, so we will not be approving the minutes from July 18th at this time. Okay. So we are at committee reports. I'm going to ask Dr. Moffitt to please present the ad hoc attendance boundaries report.
Okay. Right, we had an ad hoc committee meeting. It was myself who was elected the chair and by my colleagues, Board Member Bolton and Board Member Jones. We had some community members present and it was very, we had some administration there as well. Just as a reminder, I want to remind everyone that this particular ad hoc committee, Board Member Bolton gave a really great definition of what this committee was to do, so I want to read it. That we will be, to the audit committee, we will be looking into better ways to organize programming geographically, address transportation costs, redraw boundaries and encourage more attendance in the district's neighborhood schools. This is for elementary schools is where we are starting. That was her description. And Board Member Jones said we need to stay on target to the task at hand. So that is what we are going to do. The minutes are on the website, so I encourage the public to go read them. I'm going to just kind of skim. Board Member Bolton gave us a great historical perspective as to how we got here and also some of the history of the district with regard to, at one point, we had quadrants, we had a meridian plan that was discussed and talked about. And she said that neighborhood boundaries were considered in the startup of the Clifton Neighborhood School and the Clifton community was fully informed and really, really engaged. She also talked about events that happened on the east side and the facilities master plan played a super big part in determining attendance boundaries. Let's see. I'm just trying to skim here so that we can move on in the best interest of time. Let's see. We had a community member, Ozzy Davis, who expressed concern about the racial makeup specifically at John P. Parker School in Schroeder. And he also urged us as an ad hoc committee to consider how our high schools are impacted. If we don't get this right with regard to elementary schools, then it will trickle down into high schools being impacted and the boundaries there. We had former school board member, Dr. Virginia Rhodes, was in attendance and she gave some great insight as well about what's going on in the College Hill community and encouraged us also to engage with community organizations that work with neighborhood schools to try to get some community perspective as well. Let's see. There was a suggestion to work with Xavier University's Community Building Institute, the CBI, to conduct a study on housing in the communities and how that can impact our neighborhood boundary lines. We do have another meeting coming up on August the 10th, 10 o'clock. Everyone is welcome to come. We have some really cool maps that you need to see from one of our staff members. Jeremy provided, I think he might have been the hit of the show, other than the historical perspective, but to show the maps of the district boundaries and the neighborhood boundaries. And you get to see how some, there's, there's not always an overlap, but some of that you can see more specifically in person. So if you come in person, you get to see everything. If you come online, it will be filtered because we do have some sensitive information present. But we do encourage you to come if this is a community and board and administration conversation. So I submit these minutes as written. Do any of my members have anything to add? Board Member Bolton, Board Member Jones?
Do board members have questions or comments?
That was my next point. That was my next point.
That's okay. No, that's okay. Ms. Morosky?
Thank you. One comment and then one question. The comment is Jeremy Gollighew, our IT Director's maps are amazing and make it real, real easy to figure out sort of what is really happening in these schools, where are our kids coming from? I'm really happy this committee's up and running. So my only question is, it sounds like it went well. I mean, this is brand new, again, for the public who's just tuning in, the 30 folks out there. This is, this was the first inaugural meeting and it sounds like there was community input. People were interested. Is that, I guess my question is, does that seem right?
Yes, there was community input. We had really, we had dialogue. It was really, really good. And I do want to say this, our agenda for the next, next week, actually, two weeks, let me give some agenda items. We're going to have a report from legal counsel on the historical review of boundary lines and the legal parameters. The quadrant school, pre-K to sixth and pre-K to eighth in high schools, we're going to have a little bit of that. Review of city, Cincinnati recognized neighborhood boundary lines, we're going to review that. How big of a, the question is, how big of a problem are attendance boundaries? We're going to discuss that. We're also going to talk about data on what neighborhood schools can walk, school kids can walk to school and what percentage of kids live in the neighborhood boundary lines? And then what are some of the capacities of our building? Going to try to hit that too. So just, I wanted to give those topics for those people that have not, had not attended. Any other questions? I thought it was great. It was a robust conversation. It was engaging discussion. All right. Thank you. I submit them as written.
Thank you, Dr. Moffitt. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present budget, finance and growth.
Thank you very much. We too had a very good meeting. And as always, on a monthly basis, administration presents to us the financial, monthly financial reports and highlighting at least five items that will be particularly of interest to board members and to the community. We also, at that time, recognized the service of our departing Susan Bunty for her work throughout her years at Cincinnati Public. We also talked a little bit, and I think there's some good information here from General Counsel regarding the negotiations with the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Group as we develop the continuation of the master agreement that began preschool promise. That's in the works now and is in the Superintendent and General Counsel's purview and we will be getting updates on that. We also, as always, had a good follow-up and a continuing monitoring of our state and federal grants from a treasurer staff. And then also, we did talk in terms of referring some items that needed to go to the policy committee for review and hopeful adoption to be then sent to the full board. So agreed to the draft on that policy, property tax abatement's policy, and will refer it to the Policy and Equity Committee. Treasurer presented a short presentation on the key performance indicator process and how that might be used to, as the Superintendent and Treasurer mentioned, create more efficient and better ways of managing those efforts, especially as it pertains to, as it pertains to the extension or conclusion of contracts. Also, in holding vendors more accountable. And then we did talk additionally about the negotiations that are not only with preschool promise, but the negotiations that are also with assorta as we begin to map out the arrangements that we will have for our ninth to 12th graders on Metro, as well as the new thing of not necessarily having the seventh and eighth graders on that. So that was a rather extensive part of our conversation. We also raised some issues regarding the athletic trainers at children's and I think the Superintendent and Treasurer responded to that, as did, I think, the General Counsel. Of course, not surprisingly, I continue to raise the issue of our own van and internal bus fleet. And indeed, it's, it's still somewhere on the table, but on the table and that counts. Superintendent Wright provided the committee with the following updates regarding the Walnut Hills expansion, both the dome and also the cafeteria, as well as the Pleasant Ridge Montessori School and also Hyde Park. It's reported that things are moving well and that we will have periodic updates regarding facilities. What's also included in the minutes are the usual, but extensive and very detailed charts that are submitted by the Treasurer for not only the committee and the board to review, but also for the community to review. I submit and hope for passing.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do board members have questions or comments of the Budget, Finance and Growth Committee? Okay, thanks. Final committee report, Mr. Morosky, Policy and Equity.
Thank you Vice President Jones and thank you to board staff, Ms. Bruckner, for getting these turned around so quickly. The meeting was just on Friday. And thanks to my colleagues for putting up with my July schedule and having a meeting at the last minute. There are a lot of policies we felt were important to kind of get in the bag for the start of school, which is why you have an amended agenda with a number of red line additions. So I'd love to talk about them before we get to the resolution piece. First, we talked about board member compensation, which is a conversation that had started with the larger body and brought up some issues in our bylaws. Board Policy 0147 and Board Policy 6231, which is appropriations and spending plan. Committee Member Moffitt had stated, and she's said this publicly numerous times, that all activities at a school should be considered board-approved activities, i.e. can receive renumeration for, say, traveling to a school, et cetera. Board Member Bolton, in principle, did not seem to agree with that, stating, you know, like not every single, you know, trip to a school is board sanctioned. Now, boards sanction stuff when we send folks to Washington DC, Columbus, et cetera, should be compensated or reimbursed as per Ms. Bolton. My opinion was more aligned with Ms. Bolton's. We had a good discussion. We agreed to shelve that piece of the conversation. I just thought it was important to bring up and let folks know, you know, we continued it. The action we took and the General Counsel, Mr. Hoin, can correct me if I'm wrong, was the language that's added to the bylaws is simply legal in nature and nothing super substantive. One section of the other, thank you, legal language that was moved from one section or another, so it's not new language. And we will recommend revisions to that and Board Policy 6231 and will recommend approval of these policies. Board Policy 3211 whistleblower protection was probably the most, most robust part of the discussion. We had a lot of discussion about, you know, the chain of reporting and fear of retribution, which is real. Mr. Hoin reminded us that this policy is designed to negate retribution, of course. And I think all three board members recognize that regardless of the best of intentions, you know, these things can still happen. Some highlights from the minutes, I think, for the public's edification. We discussed adding language to include, there was a piece that says responsible CPS administrator. So for example, if an employee feels that the, the poor behavior is coming from an immediate supervisor, obviously you don't whistleblow to the immediate supervisor. The language in the policy read responsible CPS administrator. There were differing opinions. I thought the ambiguity added strength to it, but I also was aligned with Ms. Bolton and Dr. Moffitt sort of settled on, you know, let's give some examples. And so the policy you'll see tonight has added language regarding three different position titles, internal auditor, general counsel and human services director. So, you know, it'll still say responsible CPS administrator, for example, these three folks that you could report to. It came up in that same discussion from me. You know, we have a policy regarding board staff communication in our bylaws and, you know, there's a piece in there obviously about how to report. If it's the Superintendent or the Treasurer, you know, that would be reporting to us, which would, you know, create some different communication structures. So that's in the minutes as well as something we may need to discuss. We didn't take any action there, but tonight, we will recommend the revisions to the whistleblower policy and a board policy 1411. Board Policy 3210, employee ethics. We made some revisions to keep in line with the law and rescinded another board policy that was duplicative. You'll see that here, so we'll recommend the revisions to 3210 and rescinding 4210. Board Policy 5517.01, prohibition on harassment, intimidation and bullying. We, we look at that a lot, just to make sure we're doing a good job. We don't have anything to our field, just wanted you to know that we talked about it. There were some revisions to our 0147 and Board Policy 6231 that were, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped back. What I meant to read was, sorry, there were no changes to that policy. There are a lot of policies. Board Policy 9125, social media for district employees. This is an interesting discussion. There are recent court cases that have discussed social media, public school districts. And the phrase that Stephanie Scott and Dan Hoin, you know, sort of made us aware of is that the courts have ruled on this substantial disruption and using whether or not the social media outside of work. I'm look over here because our General Counsel's smarter than me and I see if he nods, he goes like this, I keep going if he goes like this, if he goes like that, stop. If there's substantial disruption, so how do we define substantial disruption? We had a real robust conversation about this. Dr. Moffitt recommended specifically including Google Chat and, because we have examples in the policy of what CPS uses and saying, you know, but not limited to, et cetera, when referencing apps. And so you'll see that revised policy in the minutes and we will recommend that on the 15th. We decided that this one, we wanted to give our colleagues some time to digest it because there are some changes and so we're not just going to put it on the agenda tonight like some of these other ones that were just cleaning up or rescinding. So you have till the 15th to check it out. Board Policy 3216, excuse me. The important part I left out of that is the brand new policy also for social media for students. So there is not a lot of precedent, if you can believe it or not, for social media policies for students and we have one now, thanks to Ms. Scott. And board members, you know, we can talk about it, we have till the 15th, but we thought it would be good as a committee to have these in the bag for the start of the school year. And we found out from our discipline folks that an insane amount of our discipline referrals, like three quarters or more come from social media, started on social media. And so we felt the need to ask General Counsel to, to draft something for us. Board Policy 3216, very near and dear to my heart, dress and grooming. I will be recommending some, not many changes to that. There's one little change in it that we will recommend later for our passage. I'm almost done, I promise. This is cool though. At our next meeting, we are going to take up all of our policies that deal with community engagement. We're going to look at community learning centers, local school decision-making committees and non-school organizations. The homework the policy committee has to comb through our policies to see what else may be pertinent. We decided that this conversation is so important that we should just have a meeting where these are. And so next meeting, actually in a few weeks, on August 19th at 9:00 AM, we will talk about those. Lastly, and Board Member Jones has brought this up and so I think she'll be interested in this piece. The official definitions of equity published and passed by board action. There's a lot of talk about equity in our district and the comment was made, I'm not in the habit of speaking for Ms. Jones, I'm not that stupid, but the comment was made at one meeting about, you know, we have these definite, we know what it says. And so our committee has taken, took it up at our last meeting. There's obviously no changes or revisions recommended. We love the policy. I'll encourage you to look in the minutes. One thing that I brought up was there's a, there's a final paragraph in the equity policy, Board Policy 2255, that has been lauded as an historic. Policy 2255, that has been lauded as an historic policy by council, great city schools, and others, but there's a paragraph at the very end that says, "We will," the board, "will see and vote upon an equity plan every single year," which hasn't happened in the five years that I've been here. And I'm, this is how great, we do a good job. I just want to be clear, like, I don't, there's a lot of things in our policies. This is why we have a policy committee. There's a lot of things that we may or may not be doing, where I think we're doing a good job personally with this issue, but we called it out in the minutes because we thought, this is a good time. We have a new board. We have a new Superintendent. Can't say that too much longer. But we're not so new anymore, but this would be a nice thing to maybe look at. It's in your minutes, check it out. And lastly, Committee Member Bolton, at the very end, brought up, because we, tonight, likely voting on an important contract with our public transportation agency. What percentage is CPS in compliance with our transportation policies that you all know we've been working on for, like, a year? We passed them all recently. And Mr. Hoying believed that we're, it's pretty good, and so I assume tonight there may be an opportunity to talk more about that. I submit the minutes as written.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Policy and Equity Committee? I do have a comment. We've tried for, like, four or five years to keep everybody under five minutes. There is nobody sitting up here tonight that can do a report in less than five minutes. Mr. Morosky, you win the award for the night. For not, not under five minutes, over five minutes, but you're good. Welcome back, welcome back, my friend.
Thank you so much. It's good to be back in the game. Good to be here.
Okay, all right. I need a motion to accept the committee reports. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, committee reports are approved as presented. We have two presentations this evening, and our first presentation is from Treasurer Wagner on office overview and evaluation for fiscal year 2023.
Well, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to brag a little bit about our department. So, just jumping right in. Are you driving for me, Rob? There we go. We are fully committed to these three areas: financial integrity, financial responsibility, and financial results, and positive results. And we use those mantra to support with the district, the board's vision and mission, specifically that we're educating all students with rigor, and we want to support the Superintendent's goals, the board goals, and the schools. And we do that with the following departmental. Thank you. And I think, I want to take a minute and actually read it. It took us a while to get there, but we, our mission is to manage and report the district's financial resources with accuracy, efficiency, and utmost integrity in order to maximize instructional and operational services for the children of Cincinnati. By June 30, 2024, that's a significant date, we will be recognized for our financial excellence, exceeding expectations, be considered valued partners by our schools and departments, and our employees in the department will feel fully valued and have joy in their work. Next slide. To help everybody understand the scope of what we do, I put some statistics up here. I won't read all of them, but we manage a billion dollars worth of budget. Seventy million of it's from state and federal grants, 300 billion of it's from ESAR funds. We manage and support 150 separate budget units, 65 of them are schools. We issued close to 1,500 invoices. Most of those are from the community reimbursement and tax abatement bills. We manage 271 district credit cards, and we track over a billion and a half dollars in capital assets. And in terms of supporting our employees, we issued last year over 140,000 paychecks. 99.8% are on direct deposit. We're very proud of them. We issued 7,300-ish W-2s that were printed, stuffed, and mailed through a big pizza party. And then, we also issued about 6,800 1095s. That's your medical compliance document. On the vendor side, we issued almost 12,000 purchase requisitions and contracts and issued over 12,000 payments. We are now paying 51% of our vendors electronically. When we started this project several years ago, we had 10 vendors that we paid electronically, and so we've been slowly increasing that. One of the goals is to pay faster, and so electronically is a lot easier. Things get lost in the mail a lot. In terms of audits, over the last two years, we've posted 26 different audits. They all were very well, all clean audits, and we got audited by a lot of people. So, I'll go into more details. Next slide. So, the Board of Education provides direct oversight to the Treasurer's function through the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee, and the three board members. We meet every, the third Friday of every month at 10:45, and they're published. And then, also, there's a subcommittee of the Board, of the Finance Committee, which all three Finance Committee members sit on, in addition to 10 community members who volunteer. They're all accounting and audit professionals. And then, we have a three-member internal audit team that also participates. Externally, we are held accountable by a plethora of people, including the Ohio State Auditor's Office, the Ohio Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Education, the Ohio Ethics Commission, the General Financial Officers Association. That's the organization that gives us the reporting award every year, 16 years running now, Hamilton County Budget Commission, and of course, our taxpayers, parents, and students. We are audited, and so, like, those 25 audits or 26 audits that we had, we have an annual financial audit from the State Auditor's Office. They outsource to Plattenberg &amp; Associates. And we also are audited through ODE, through a majority of our large grants. Every year, they have a requirement to do so many dollars, and it, the big districts is easy because we have big dollars. We've also been audited by the business community, where they did a financial efficiency study several years ago, and was very positive in support of the district's management of the finances. And then, we also endured Ohio, State Auditor's Office did a performance audit back in 2015, I believe, 16. Next slide. So, this is a functional org chart. It doesn't have any names on it. But in addition to the typical accounting processes, payroll, receivables, payables, we also manage the district's financial technology. So, that's the green team on that side. There's two things I wanted to point out that are new. The first being said, the one purple position that's up at the top, the contracts analyst, is the first time we've added a position in almost eight years. We've been able to do improvements and reorganization of skill sets. And that position is, been added to help us with our return on investment initiatives. And so, it's going to take a lot to manage the data and the contracts and communicate, and so we need some help to do that. The other point, area I wanted to point out, is that little box called SPOT, and that stands for Supply Pyramid Operations Team. And so, we really did that in feedback with our schools, who were struggling with trying to keep up with all the rules of the financial transactions. How many quotes do I need to have? Am I using the right general ledger account code, the right grant, right purpose? And so, we created, we took two vacant positions in the accounting shop and created this team, where they actually handle the financial transactions on behalf of the schools. They're still the decision-maker, but we take care of all the rules and regs and the processing. It's received very positive feedback. They're able to process and have less compliance issues than the district overall. They supported eight schools last year, and they're expanding to 10. And so, we're hoping that the positive results will help us fund more. Next slide. So, now, I want to talk about how the public can hold us accountable. And so, we are committed to financial transparency. On our website, we have access to the OhioCheckbook.com, so if you're interested, you can look at all 14,000 payments that we make, one at a time. We also have a website and external dashboard through opengov.com. That's also linked on our public website. And then, every transaction that's over 50,000, 50,000 or over, has to be board-approved in a public business meeting, and anything between 10 and 50 is shown, represented publicly in the Treasurer's report as for board information. Additionally, Chair Bolton referred to the financial reporting, the monthly financial reports that we do through Finance Committee, and they're adopted, presented and adopted, and then at a board meeting. This is a screenshot of the financial page off of the district's website. Over to the left, you can see the link to opengov, but if you want to know our forecasts or our past budgets, anything financial, this is the place to go. Next slide. So, in the Financial Operation House, the first rule of thumb that's difficult for people to understand is that every dollar, every penny that we spend has to meet the standard from the Ohio Auditor's Office of proper public purpose. And their definition is, does it further the education of a student? And so, we try to be really good stewards and safeguard our taxpayers' dollars by following that rule. Sometimes, people don't like the answer, but, you know, the State Auditor's Office is in charge. So, we operate on a cash basis, unlike corporate America, who uses an accrual basis, and the difference is, when corporate America makes a sale or pays a bill, or orders a bill, you know, orders something, they recognize that either that sale or that expense when it occurs. School districts don't recognize the revenue until we actually get the cash in hand, or if we don't recognize the expense until we pay, pay the bill, instead of when we order it. We operate on a June 30 fiscal year end, which is different than most corporate America who operates on a calendar year basis, and our property taxes operate on a calendar year basis as well. So, we're always operating in two different ways. We follow fund accounting procedures, and I won't bore you with what that means, but basically, every operational performance or funding grant source has its own bank account, sort of. And so, that follows fund accounting rather than GAAP accounting. All 613 school districts follow the same general ledger account structure, so that when they consolidate our data, they can do some analysis on, comparative analysis on how we spend money. And then, we're all required to do two financial forecasts that are board-approved twice a year, November and May. That takes us to, how as a department do we hold ourselves accountable? And so, the next slide, we try to adopt themes. This year's themes are going to be own it, be analytic, don't just report the data, but analyze it, always about process improvement, so that we can better serve our schools and departments, and then, one band, one sounds. Some of the feedback we received over the years is that sometimes we send mixed messages and mixed answers on rules, and so we're trying to be very deliberate about standardizing our communication. And then, that link down at the bottom is the internal, the link is just a note, sorry, the internal KPI. So, next slide. Every month, this is just a screenshot of one of the pages, but every month, the department gets together and they present to each other, each team presents to each other on their key performance indicators. This happens to be an example of the accounts receivable team. You can see where they talk about what their experience is. It's both, like, percentage and then over history, and the rest of the department gets to challenge and ask them questions. And so, we have over 60 measures that we look at every month. You can see at the top, across the top, there are the different pages. I just showed you one. Thank you. So, the next slide. So, how does the board hold me accountable? And you can go to the next slide. I hate that picture. Keep going. So, my evaluation cycle is from May through April, which is different than everybody, every other employee in the district, and so, but just by state law. So, every year, I get an evaluation from the board, and then, on these performance standards, and these are adopted by national and Ohio State rule recommendations. So, I get measured on leadership skills, financial management, facilities, property and capital management, communication, collaboration, professionalism, and you can see the weightings there on how I do that. And that's all through the lens of the six goals that we're adopting. We have five to six goals every year, and so this year's goals are the number one, passing of the levy that's coming up in November. I have a slide on that a little bit later. But off to the right, we'll show you the measures specifically for the board to review to determine how well I did on this particular goal. The second measure is equity on the budget process. And so, we've preliminary developed what we call an equity index. And so, we're working through the academic side of the house to determine the academic side of that, and then, we'll have the plan established so that we can start using it in the next budget cycle. Equity is really hard to measure financially, and so, this is one recommendation that we found that we're able to do. So, next slide. So, after we do the equity, the budgeting, how are we going to measure our return on investment, and whether things are working? Are we investing in the right things? Are we using our money the most wisely? And so, we've come up with a plan. Number first, to look at all vendor contracts, to make sure that we have good outcome measures for every purpose outsourced contract that we have, and hold that accountable. And then, we use that, is it working or isn't it working? In order to determine whether we're going to reinvest in that each year. In addition to vendor contracts, we're going to look at programmatic or project-related things, on whether that's working as well. One example comes to mind is summer scholars. Did that produce the results that we intended? Or the reading specialist was kind of a new spend for us? Are we getting the reading scores that we intended in the investment that we made? So, the fourth goal is about improving financial engagement, and so, that was one area, the communication side. We did a couple town halls this year. They were very well-received. We had, like, a 3,000% increase in engagement and participation. And so, we're going to do more of those this year to help communicate with our parents, our community, and taxpayers. And then, I'm working with our new chief of communications to come up with a really nice financial publication to send out to our residents quarterly. Next slide. The fifth goal is about improving quality. In a former life, I was really into total quality management, and so I've adopted that in our department. And this year, we're going to focus on two major areas: pay the vendor bills faster and improving payroll related, specifically related to schedule e-payments and extended time. Those are very complicated, and they cross over several departments, and there's a lot of handoff, so we're really focused on those areas. The last goal is about expanding the treasurer pipeline. It's not news that retirement, for me, is coming up in the next couple of years, and so I want to make sure that I leave the department in the best hands I can and give the board options on who my successor would be. And so, I've been working really hard to train individuals, and this year, I'm working on the next level of getting some career plans put together. Next slide. But here's a tentative schedule of the town halls I referred to earlier and the topics that we received people of interest, had interest in. And so, we're hoping that on September 8th, we're going to kick off this year's cycle with the financial update and talk about the upcoming levy, property taxes, moving into the forecast and revenues, then into the budget cycle, as we did this year, focusing on federal grants, state and federal grants, and then ESAR. But I really want to do one about tax abatements, because there's so much confusion and misinformation out there about the Community Reinvestment Acts, and I was hoping that I can invite somebody from the city to participate in the town hall with me, conversationally. And then, I put two out there just for other new topics of people of interest. You're laughing at me. Skip one more slide, Rob, please. I added this as a register reminder, what our levy is about, 51.5 million dollar levy. This will be the third renewal. Difference, the only difference being, we're going to try to extend the levy cycle from five years to 10 years, to avoid the voter fatigue and longer-term planning. It's had a really good passage rate in the past, and, but it is pretty significant dollars. So, 51.5 million in a 610 million dollar budget, it's pretty significant, and so, not passing it would be devastating to our budget. We'd have to cut 25 million out in the fiscal year '24 budget, and then another 25 in the following year. And just so everybody knows, we've got a lot of questions about, why can't you just use ESAR to do this, to replace these funds? Number one, ESAR is temporary, it's very restricted. We can only use the money on COVID-related things, and so you can't just use it for operations. And then, it goes away, and then you have all that other stuff, all that stuff that you're spending on. What are you going to do with it? You know, for example, and I brought this up before, we're using ESAR to fund the nurse's contract. It went from $2.4 million a year pre-COVID to $9 million in the midst of what we're doing. And so, when that, that funding source goes away, we have to decide, how are we going to scope it? How are we going to fund it? And if it's coming back to the general fund, what are we going to take out to fund it? And so, we have some pretty tough decisions to make. We're going to, working on updating a whole ESAR presentation for you. So, with that, I will pause and answer any questions.
Thank you, Treasurer Wagner. Do board members have questions or comments?
Yes, Member Moffett.
I have a comment and a suggestion to the community. First of all, I want to say thank you. I've had the pleasure to work with you on engagement strategies, and it's already in there. You are by far the smartest person I know with regard to this. You are, and I want to make a statement that you are being intentional with trying to work to get the community to understand school finance. It's not the most interesting topic, but I want to invite the community to come and listen and ask you questions. I've been able to field a lot of questions, but you get them and then you answer. So, the, when was the next town hall? Was September the 8th?
September 8th, right.
I want to make sure people put that down on the calendar because you are, well, the next financial town hall, I'm sorry. Because you are really, really trying to be intentional. And I appreciate that. You've got some other good stuff coming. So, be tuned, stay in tune for, what did we say? Talks with Jen about money.
Just Ask Jen.
Just Ask Jen. So, bring your questions for Jen about money and school finance. And you're also going to do something regarding, what is your tax bill? How does the money from your tax bill go to the school district? And so, I just want to make sure that I publicly say, I see that you're really, really trying to do this, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. And thank you, Treasurer Wagner. I learn something every time you talk. It's been great being on Finance this year. It's the first time I've been on Finance Committee. And I'll just highlight, as I know Ms. Bolton is wanting to do the work of the Audit Committee, which was a pretty revolutionary idea when it came to CPS. We like to be the first. That Audit Committee is real sharp and provides some really good feedback. And I've learned a lot from those community members, too. So, just wanted to highlight that for people. My question, and I probably missed it, and I apologize. Are we voting on the language for the levy at Committee of the Whole on the 10th? Because we don't have another meeting till the 15th.
You've already approved both resolutions for the levy.
That's right, we did the language.
The valid language has been approved. We're just waiting for an issue number now.
I did miss that. I was right. Okay, good. I kind of saw that, and I was like, wait a second. Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you. Somebody said you go out of the country a lot.
I think that was Moffett.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate this report and appreciate the, Mr. Lindy providing the time on the schedule for this as we kick off this coming year. And also, are, what, 99 days away from our levy, where we have to go to the public? So, this is great. I think this gives the proper context. And I appreciate it. I'm very interested in that contract analyst. And does that person, is that, I know that the key performance indicator, a lot of that's going to be about contracts, possibly? Is that person then, or is that position specifically involved with that effort? Or?
That's the purpose of creating that position, was to help with that, manage that effort.
That's great.
Yes.
That's good.
I'm very excited.
And then, also, I think the town halls are great, and I appreciate Member Moffett kind of pushing that. I appreciate it. I think it needs to be done. The other piece of this regarding the health of our district financially, could you speak again, as you have before, some of the constraints and problems, challenges that we have, whether it's about state funding or other kinds of things that have changed? Because I know part of it is how we are rated, you know, in the state regarding whether or not we're a wealthy district or not. But if you could just talk a little bit about that as well, that would help us as we get ready to take our requests to the community.
Sure. So, one of the challenges is that we have, we're funded by the state, and that budget changes every two years, and the formula changes constantly. The other challenge that we have is that because the state of Ohio uses property wealth as an indicator for local districts' ability to raise their own funds, i.e. levies and property taxes. And so, because of our property wealth, it's always considered a very wealthy district. And in fact, we're the wealthiest of the urbans, except for a weird formula nuance that happened with Columbus, who now leapfrog over. So, now they're the wealthiest. But we just learned this morning that, you know, prior to the House Bill 110, which is a budget bill, we only receive 46% of state funding because of our wealthy factor. And it's all relative to the other districts. So, one district could get really poor because of something shuts down, or, you know, they have a renovation, they close down a whole section, their property values go down, so they get poorer. We get richer because we're relative to that. But most recently, with the triennial update in our property tax base, we got richer. So, we went from a 46% state share. So, that means we got 46 on the dollar for every student that generated money of the state formula. Last year, we were at 43% because of the formula change, and we just dropped to 40%. So, 40 cents on the dollar. It makes it really hard to forecast into the future and have multi-year budgets because of the changeability of the funding sources. And, you know, we experienced and enjoyed enrollment growth. And as new students come, we have to spend more money to support those students in either facilities or supplies and teachers. But property taxes do not fluctuate with enrollment. So, as more students come to the district, that property tax dollar gets spread thinner and thinner, and the state formula doesn't necessarily keep up with that growth.
Thank you. And I think, too, in the preparation for community involvement and engagement on the levy piece, I think some of those challenges would also be helpful for us as we go out and make the request, I think. And so, some more education of, certainly me, and perhaps other board members as well, that would be helpful. And then, finally, I just, I think it's great, this will sound, this will sound really crazy. Thanks for putting a lot of teenagers in the presentation because we tend to just put little people in here because everybody adores little people. But I was loving seeing teenagers in it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you to our communications team who provided the pictures for me.
They're good ones. Thank you.
Mr. Craig?
So, I had another starting point, but I guess I'll start with the fact that I appreciate you pointing out that I was in the pictures there as one of those teenagers. But I think, one of the things that I think you had mentioned during the presentation and actually is about the equity aspect. And I know we've been talking about it in budget as to how do we divide these very limited resources that we have and will become more and more limited as the state keeps limiting and limiting further among the schools in a way that respects the needs of the schools and the need for innovation and renovation, but also recognizes that we have to afford each school an equitable amount of that, of those limited assets. And so, I really do appreciate you highlighting that and constantly thinking about that. I think we've talked about that also, term return on investments, as to how do we divvy out some of those dollars in a way that will be both equitable, but also gets the best value for the dollar? And that's a struggle that I think you all are working really hard to do to show our community also that we are the best stewards of their, of these resources that we're being provided for. So, just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy, did you have a question or comment?
I apologize for my ill-timed cough during Mr. Craig's presentation. Please, I hope he doesn't take that personally. I wanted to say a couple things. One was to the Treasurer, and then the second was to the board itself. I think to the Treasurer, Jen, I wanted to say thank you for this presentation. And there's so much in it that I think is important. I won't duplicate comments from my colleagues because many of them mentioned a number of important pieces to it. But I would pull out your sharing in advance what the measurable goals and outcomes are for you and for your department for this year, which is fantastic. And I think it makes our job as board members possible, which I think is a segue to the second thing I wanted to say just to my colleagues. I think this is a wonderful example of where we, as a board, spend our time best as board members, which is holding the administration accountable for measurable outcomes that matter for kids. And so, we have that here. I think they're great. I'm so glad that there's a goal around measuring financial impact. I'm so glad that there is a goal around financial equity. And I'm just grateful for our Treasurer and excited to watch her move this very important work forward. I would just offer one point of difference with my colleague, Dr. Moffett. I think school finance can be very interesting and look forward to more chances to talk about it together. Vice President Jones, can you not hear me?
I didn't hear your one comment, but don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'm, just in closing, I just want to say thank you again for the report. And I agree wholeheartedly with President Lindy's comments about presenting the measurable goals. Our public, a lot of people in the public don't know that you report directly to the board. And your role is very important, you know? On the scale of things, you know, we couldn't do this thing we call operating a district without fully understanding how the dollars impact what we do, you know? And so, the board, with these goals that I think have been developed with consideration from the board, I think it really helps us to really wrap our thinking around what your work is all about, to do a fair assessment of how you do your job. And I, so I thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you on that. And I think, all said and done, that we all agree that those goals are what we're looking for. And we don't need to have a motion or anything on it, but if everybody's in agreement, we can move forward with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Okay, Mr. Craig, you're on. We have another presentation on board governance training.
All righty. So, we met myself, Vice President Jones, President Lindy, as well as Superintendent Wright with Cindy with the Council on Great City Schools, and discussed just kind of our next steps in moving forward with the board governance. I think this is one of the things that we really wanted to focus and get good steps going forward. And so, what we talked about is using some of the feedback that we received in our previous community outreach and engagements, connected up with the search for the superintendent to start the process of building our guardrails and our goals. But what we also talked about is, once we've built those things, we need to have a process of taking that information back to the community. So, what the board members will receive from Cindy soon, if not already, because I haven't checked my email, but is some of our next steps and guidance. So, our next steps will be identifying those community partners and community members and community groups that we haven't already touched on or that weren't included in the original one that we need to reach out to in addition. And so, this is an opportunity for us to kind of define some of the areas that might have been missed in our previous outreach and community engagements. We also wanted to think about this in, Cindy talks about this, or Council Great City Schools talks about community engagement being this idea of a two-way communication where it's a discussion with, between the board and the community that kind of focuses on the community's vision and values and what's their hopes for the district. Whereas, community outreach is a little bit more of an opportunity for the community to, for us to go into the community and have the community express some of those concerns. So, engagement is us asking them to come to us and to join us today. Base outreach is us going into one of their meetings or one of the organization's meetings throughout the community. And so, we want to just think about those opportunities to attend particular meetings or to invite folks out for different town halls or whatever the case may be, to open up engagements. Additionally, thinking about how we want to have those conversations so that we have a consistent conversation with each of those groups. So, we, the next steps, once we've started to build those guardrails and goals, will be to build up our discussion points. How do we want to have that talk within the community to explain those things that we've drafted? How do we want to receive their feedback? One of the important things we want to make sure of is that as we go out and do these things, that we want to have it be at least two board members at each of these types of engagements. This is specifically so that one board member isn't tasked with having to do both grabbing the feedback and having the conversation at the same time. But also, because it brings an opportunity to get the full perspective from both people. So, if there's at least two board members at every board engagement or board outreach, it really helps us with the community, really helps us to be able to get that feedback fully. And again, we're going to start building those consistent points. So, you should receive something soon that we'll task everybody with that. And I think that, our expectation is that we will start doing that and getting those ideas of those locations be sent in by the 15th. I believe is what we're going to look at, setting the date for everybody to return their ideas. It's really just on who should we be talking to at this point? And then, we'll, as a board, work towards building those goals and guardrails so that we can have those conversations with the community and start getting that wrapped up the latter half of August. But as we head into September, we are starting to build on those goals. We're starting to have some community feedback and do, be able to do some of that assessment. But I am open to hear any other questions? Oh, the other part is that we will going to weekly meet to discuss these steps in progress and keep building so that we have something to bring back to the board more often and that we can push the process through in a timely manner.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions or comments regarding that update? I think more importantly, check your emails because you're going to be inundated with information. And we want to make sure we stay on our timeline to get the work accomplished. And we talked about how to provide assistance and support for those of us who are not technology savvy. Me and my buddy right here. She know what I'm talking about. But, but anyway, we'll, we'll get it done. But we'll have our weekly calls. Good, good thing. Good thing. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Craig. All right, so we're going to do our resolutions? Yes, you have questions?
Yeah, just some points of clarification. I think this is great. Wanted to know on, on this initial engagement is just about goals and guardrails. Is that what it's about?
Yeah. So, what we're going to, so the next level of engagement we will be doing is, once we devise, or once we've put what our goals and guardrails, to go back to the community and get their inputs, their thoughts, their feedback, their feedback on that, and be able to then communicate that into further, like consolidating our goals and guardrails into what will ultimately be our final draft version. So, yes, it will be focused around that. Like, who are the community partners? Who can give us guidance on those, on our goals as a district?
So, the, I think all this is good. I'm just trying to get clarification. The, so the board will initially work on goals and guardrails and then share with the community?
Yes. So, yeah, so what we would be going to a community with is a draft. Now, these are goals that are devised by the board in association also with the superintendent providing her, providing her, providing information for us to be able to assess some of those bigger goals based on her own interim goals for her work. So it's, it is going to be kind of a collective product that we take out there and say, hey, this is what we're thinking about, and then be able to get some of that feedback and some of those thoughts as to items we might have missed, areas where we may have, may not have thought, or may not have had the same values for as they were expressing.
Okay, and then if I could, then on the goals and guardrails, then we, we go to the community and get their reaction, and then we kind of, you know, massage it and get it to where it is. I would hope that we would have some time also besides some of the stakeholder piece, at least one or two of those open kind of meetings that if anybody wanted to come, they could, just so it doesn't look too exclusive. I'm sure we'll do that, so I just think we want to be able to say that tonight. And then I also wanted to just know, we had, using the, the Great City Schools timeline, we had agreed to use some of what the findings were from Alma. Where does that fit into this piece?
So that goes into us building our initial draft.
Okay. Okay, great.
I, I also want to add to that, that all of this work will be fairly scripted in the sense that they're going to help us along in trying, in helping us plan around what our goals and guardrails are. In addition, as we go out to meet and engage with the community, we will also be able to collect things that may not fit the script, because that's what we want our community to do, is to give us their own ideas. And so our intention is to make sure we capture that, and then we can figure out, after we come back together, to figure out, you know, how we incorporate some of the vision and thoughts that they might have. Thanks.
Then if I could ask the question then, too, then we're doing the guardrails, the goals, using what we found out indeed from the engagement from the Alma folks, but divesting our perspective, getting the community's perspective, massaging it back, then when does our effort to create a strategic plan begin?
I don't think we have nailed down like a specific date, but we did talk about that in real general terms. And I don't think we know, I don't know if the superintendent has a thought on that or a comment, but we did talk about what that strategic planning sort of process from a real broad sense, what that looks like, but we have not nailed down when that would happen.
That's good, just so that, that's sort of an additional thing. It's a separate thing. This is not supposed to be looking like our strategic plan. This is goals and guardrails.
Right.
And I know President Lindy and I have talked about this, I think when he was kind of talking to all of us about our interests of what's priorities. Certainly for me, the strategic plan is because, as the treasurer's pointed out, the budget process starts pretty early and earlier now than it has in previous years. So it, we would really want our strategic plan to impact the budget for fiscal '24. So that means that we need to be kind of accelerating or arranging how we go about that.
I, I would suggest to Mr. Lindy and Mr. Craig, when we have our next phone call, that we address this more specifically about the strategic plan, because I, I think that's a very valid question, Ms. Bolton.
Vice President Jones, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Is it okay if I respond to Member Bolton's question?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, because I, I do think that as we work through this together, the, the terms we use to describe different parts of this will start to hold together better for people. But I, I have been thinking, and I mentioned this last time, as the strategic planning process having two different parts to it. One is, what should it focus on? What are the things that the community cares most about in terms of what should be true for children as, as reflected in their vision and values? And I think that that part of it is, is very much the same as what Member Craig and Vice President Jones were describing. We're, we're taking community listening that we've done, we're creating, here's what we think a good set of goals and guardrails would look like, based on that community engagement, we're checking to make sure that that's actually right by going back to the community. And I love the point you made about having some open sessions where anybody who wants to come share their feedback can come do that. I think that's a wonderful idea. And at the end of that, this, this, this first part would, would yield, here's what we as a board, having listened to the vision and values of our community, think the next strategic plan needs to focus on. We need to, for, when it comes to where do we need to win most for kids, it's area A, B, C, and D. And we've got really clear outcomes for what that looks like. I think then there's a second part, which is how do we get there? And the how do we get there part is a part that would be led by our superintendent. And I think, we'll, we'll continue to talk about this in the weeks and months ahead. I offer that perspective not because I know that it's right, or not because it's the way we absolutely have to do it, but because it's a way that made sense in my mind. And if it helps for other people, I offer it, and if it doesn't help, we will figure something else out.
Last comment, please.
Sorry, it will be the last. But I think this is important for us to manage our own elements with the community. I love the Great City Schools calls the taxpayers and the citizens, the owners of the district, and they are. And so I don't see these different things being disjointed. I see them as a, you know, a chain, but I also think that a strategic plan is bigger than goals and guardrails. And how we get any place is totally up to the administration because they're the experts. Kind of the whats and what have you, the community will communicate to us in whatever forms, but I'm not, I'm not suggesting they are disassociated or separate, but I do think that a strategic plan is, is something bigger than the goals and the guardrails. The goals and the guardrails will get us there eventually, but it's, it's a huge thing, and the community, the owners want to be fully engaged with that.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I don't disagree with you. I think, I think, like I said before, we, we haven't figured out, that's part of the reason why we are having this call, is because we recognize that people are at different places and different points, and they're thinking about how we approach the strategic plan. And so we will get there with everybody's input. We're going to keep everybody informed. We're going to go through the steps of the timeline that we agreed to, but recognizing that we do, we, it, it is part of strategic plan. The big picture is about the strategic plan. But it, it is not as concrete, I think, as what you're thinking about it, is that we have to get this document and this process that's called a strategic plan going that is parallel to what we're doing. It's not parallel. It is a big plan. It's a change. Right. Okay. Anything else in? Yes, superintendent.
Or Vice President, if I could just also add and reiterate what I think I hear collectively as a part of the discussions that we have had, and I think where some of the discussion comes from and the very focused discussion comes from around strategic plan is the conversations that we have had with Council of Great City Schools around governance and then the management of the organization. And I just want to reiterate that one of the things that I do believe that will come out from the conversations that the board has through engagement, whether that's formal or informal engagement, are the overall values of the city, the values of the community. And those things really form, even from the administration standpoint, those things form the basis of strategy. And so from there, then it would become our responsibility as the administration to then say, this is what's been identified as the areas that are important to us as a community. These are the things that have been given to us to focus on, based on that, these are the recommendations that we have for how to meet those outcomes. So I just want to make sure from my perspective that I reiterate what I hear in the conversations, because it's not disconnected, and it's not one where it's just the goals, guardrails, and then everyone's done. The feedback that all of us get, and I think Board Member Murawski said it earlier during a session that we had, is all of us get feedback from across the board. All of the board members receive feedback. I receive feedback. And what makes us really connected as a body, a board and a CEO body, is that we're able to take all of the feedback that we get, and the treasurer body, because our treasurer receives feedback as well, we're able to take all of the feedback that we receive, bring that information back to the table, and then make recommendations for next steps for the organization. So I just wanted to kind of bring it all together in terms of my level of understanding of it, is not that it's disconnected, but it's a both and versus an either or.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig, for the update. We're going to move into our resolutions. I'm going to ask Ms. Bolton, it's presented on behalf of Cincinnati Board, resolution on school vouchers.
Thank you very much. And again, I'll read this, and it is presented on behalf of the whole board. This is Cincinnati Public Schools, a resolution opposing the expansion of school vouchers and joining a lawsuit to challenge the constitutionality of the Ohio Ed Choice voucher program. Whereas recent state legislative changes to expand Ohio's Ed Choice voucher program threaten Cincinnati Public Schools and public schools throughout the state, and whereas, among other concerning changes, Ed Choice vouchers have been expanded by increasing the amount of availability of private school vouchers, no longer limiting the number of Ed Choice vouchers for Ohio Department of Education funds annually, ignoring the original intention of the Ed Choice program of limiting vouchers to families of students currently enrolled in low-performing public schools, and now offering vouchers to families already paying private school tuition who have no intention of sending students to public schools. And whereas the increase of the Ed Choice voucher funding by the Ohio General Assembly represents an abrogation of Ohio's Constitution's mandate for the state to provide a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state, the Ed Choice voucher program has a direct and substantial negative impact on public education by depleting state funds and committed to public education. And, let me continue, whereas Ed Choice vouchers disproportionately benefit non-minority students and divert funds away from public schools that serve the state's highest need students, and whereas Ed Choice vouchers are accepted by private and parochial schools with discriminatory admissions policies, and schools that do not serve students with disabilities or students who require behavior supports. Whereas public, private, and parochial schools have coexisted in Cincinnati for nearly 200 years without any need for this drastic and massive influx of public funds to private schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education declares its opposition to Ed Choice voucher program in Ohio, and in particular the drastic expansion of the program over the several year, last several years. Cincinnati Public Schools will join with Dayton, Columbus, Wenton Woods, Mount Healthy, Norwood, and more than 100 other Ohio public school districts who have formed the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. The Board of Education consents to joining the lawsuit that the coalition has filed in Franklin County Court of Common Pleas against the State of Ohio and the Ohio Department of Education challenging the constitutionality of Ed Choice voucher programs. The Board authorizes the treasurer to pay coalition dues for the 2022-2023 school years submitted by the Board of Education.
This is a motion for approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Treasurer Wagner.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
My turn, sorry. I was saying, all right, because I was happy that the resolution passed. So I talked a lot about these resolutions already, so I'm just going to introduce them as written. A resolution amending board policy 0147, board member compensation.
Excuse me, but that was not second.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was so excited. I really like rescinding stuff.
You've been away too long. Why, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead and do that, and then we'll come back.
Jeez, thanks.
All right.
Sorry, Member Weinberg. I would, a resolution amending board policy 0147, board member compensation. I present the resolution. It's written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Weinberg? All right. Go ahead. Thank you. So this evening, I present a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2020-23 school year, and I submit it as written, and I look forward to its passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Murawski?
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 6231, appropriations and spending plan. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second? Discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, next resolution?
Thank you. I have a resolution amending board policy 3211, professional staff whistleblower protection. I submit and hope for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Moffett?
Professional employee ethics? I just don't have it. I didn't. I submit. Policy 3210, professional employee ethics. I submit it as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Moffett?
Professional employee ethics?
I just don't have it. I didn't. I submit. I submit policy 3210, professional employee ethics. I submit it as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Moffett, you have the next one?
I submit for policy 4210, classified employee ethics, and I submit it as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Murawski?
I have a resolution amending board policy 3216, professional employee dressing grooming, and I present the resolution for pass.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Quick, real quick, something, sorry, I just want to point out that I should have. The, while the policy has not changed a great deal, and everyone seems to be aligned with it as far as like our, our staff and everything, Dr. Moffett did bring up something that I thought was important that we did add regarding the Crown Act, which was recently passed by the federal government, stating, you know, that we cannot discriminate based on a person's natural hair or hairstyle associated with race. And I think that is a significant addition, and I wanted to give kudos to our colleague and just call it out for the public and everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion, further discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Okay, last one, Mr. Murawski.
I love it. The resolution rescinding board policy 4216, classified employee dressing grooming. Just so people are like, what the heck is going on? We have professional employee dressing grooming, classified, but we just put it all into one policy, so we need to rescind this one. I present as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion?
We have professional employee dressing grooming, classified, we just put it all into one policy. So we need to rescind this one. I present as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Weinberg, would you please present the retirement?
Yes, yes, yes. I only have one person to announce for today. Sir, our cert, can I talk today? Certified personnel, sorry about that. We have Kimberly S. Brown. She is a secondary assistant principal from SEPA. We want to thank her so much for her years of service and her dedication to this district and of course to the students. We want to wish her well and just wish her all the best.
Thank you. It's not often that we just have one, right?
I know.
That's pretty good, yeah.
We have one.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Question, Madam Chair, is this a revised treasurer?
Revised treasurer report, yes.
I'm sorry. Revised, yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one.
Yes. Ms. Bolton?
Actually, less than usual. So that's good. My part of asking a question, and General Counsel will not be surprised nor the Director of Transportation. I have several questions about the SORDA contract that is attached to this, is part of the revision, is that correct? Great, yeah, please.
Yes, the SORDA contract is on page nine.
Thank you. And then there's also the, we have the High Towers Petroleum today, and I think there's a first student, correct, in all of this. And my questions right now are about, and I think I shared these with the superintendent and with General Counsel. First question is, for the most part, and we asked this last time too, is the SORDA contract, or I should say it's not a contract, it's an agreement, so to speak, is that in keeping with the three transportation policies that we passed earlier this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so what's in those policies would be part of it. The, we'll see in this, in this language. Another one, if I could, the SORDA is only for grades nine through 12, and it's only for kids that are teenagers that are eligible, meaning we figured out the number of students that live one mile. That the, so that was the eligibility?
So to be eligible, you'd be in grades nine through 12 and live more than one school.
More than one mile. And then we, in this contract, this does not include seventh and eighth graders?
Does not, with the exception of eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders who need extracurricular passes.
Great. And then another thing, these are year-long passes, but they are, are they to be issued, as it says in this agreement, on a monthly basis? Is that how they're doing it, or is it?
Issued annually.
Issued?
They're issued annually, so we issue them at the beginning of the school year.
Right.
So they're all printed at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, there's just some reference in there about monthly that it was of concern to me. I think they're yearly, but I didn't know. Is that?
Yeah. Section 2B says school year-long passes will be issued, yes, transportation, once during any school year, unless CPS and SORDA determine an alternative plan, and I don't believe we have.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. And if we assume responsibility about replacement passes in that section, or does the language allow us to do that?
The cost of replacement passes is set by contract, that's $10 per replacement. I believe the board policy specifies that replacement passes are the cost of, at the cost of families or students acquire them.
Okay. And the distribution or whatever, that's all taken care of, it's fine, thanks. The other thing is, I still have this concern about the, was page four, the 9B, about the Ohio Revised Code, that SORDA receives, accepts no responsibility for meeting the law, it's up to us. How do we do that without SORDA?
So again, I believe the law you're referring to, it is in 9B, section 9B, a contract, Ohio Revised Code 3327.017. That section, there are two components to that section. One is that students in eighth grade or less who attend charter schools cannot be assigned to public transit without the charter school's agreement. That was taken care of by our sort of board policy and our change that students in grades K to eight will be assigned to yellow bus, that'll be true at CPS, it'll also have to be true at charter schools or parochials, non-pubs. The second component is that any student assigned to, excuse me, to public transit cannot be assigned to a route with more than one transfer. And we are working certainly with SORDA to ensure that that's true, but ultimately that statute is our responsibility to comply with. And that's, that's language that I think SORDA, I know, insisted on and would insist.
Does it pertain to ninth through 12th graders if they're assigned to public transit?
Does.
So we still, this is still unknown to us, in that we have, in order to have the law, let me start back. This pertained to charter and non-public schools or non-CPS students?
The law was, but the board policy was updated in May to apply. This is board policy 8600.01 to specify that all CPS students and non-public students assigned to public transit would be assigned to a route that does not require a student to make more than one transfer.
And, and so we have this agreement language, this falls only to us to make this happen. And right now we're not, last year there were students, significant number, that had more than one transfer. Are we working through that to see what we can do? Is that still a live item?
We are, we are working through that. But as I understand, unless there's more recent data, I have data from last week, of the 10,000 students, 10,192 that have been assigned to metro routes, 42% will have zero, are assigned to a route with zero transfers, 58% are assigned to a route with no more than one transfer. And I believe that's still accurate data. Yes, it is.
That is accurate. So that leaves just those several?
No, there are no students assigned to a route with more than one transfer.
Okay, I'm writing that down. Just be aware. But, but that's good. So as long as we're saying that's going to be done, that it's not that the charter kids or any kids get different or better service than our CPS students.
Right.
If I could also add here, and I think I asked this before, but I do want to give us just a little bit of space in case there is a challenge. And because the data that we were provided from last year does show something different. And what we have for this year shows that we do not have the transfers. So if there is an issue where we find that there is a challenge, I would ask that that information is provided to us so that we work with SORDA, because every, every address that we have for students does not show that students would have more than one transfer. So if there is an isolated case or cases that we find, I would just ask that we communicate that so that we can make sure it's corrected and that our children are on the route, route, and on the correct bus.
Right.
And, and then one, one more thing, and there are also students in our attendance area, because there were some students that were identified from last year that did not live in our district's attendance area.
Absolutely.
And therefore they did have more than one transfer to get where they were going.
It, it sounds great, and I appreciate that a lot. And it's also clear in this agreement that this, these passes, these year-long passes are for school day, school year, and school events. And the events piece is having to also have an activities pass.
The activities pass, yes, extends beyond what the normal pass would be. We have clarified with SORDA, the only change made to the contract or proposed to the contract since it was last sent to you, there were several board members who expressed concern about the language that said the passes would not be valid on school days. We've asked SORDA and they've agreed to add language that says not active on school days, quote, unless otherwise requested by CPS upon two weeks' notice. Now, excuse, yes, on non-school days, the passes will not be active unless otherwise requested by CPS upon two weeks' notice to SORDA. That was a question from several board members last week.
And I think that's great. And that's, that pertains particularly to activities, school-related, the practices, other sorts of things. Because I think, you know, it's remarkable that this district and our taxpayers are paying for all of this. And it has to be for proper public purpose, which means what we may or may not have had in last year or previous years or what have you, this, this needs to get the children and the teenagers to school and to their school events that are related. And, and is, for schools, are there going to be different starts and end times regarding each school, or is it going to be much more generic? How is the department working that out? Do we know?
Yes, so at this point, we have looked at start and end times for schools. The last consensus with the conversation was to make it a blanket time, because that would also take into consideration if students were after school for a period of time, they all met that same cutoff time. And then the additional activity passes would go for after-school activities, athletics, clubs, and those kinds of things.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Might I also add to that point as well, that, that there are events for our students that do exist on Saturday, whether that's ACT or SAT testing that students have, and events at the schools. And so during those times, the passes would be active for students to ride on those days.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Dr. Moffett?
I'm sorry. I think we don't want to just get limited into Saturdays. It could be Sundays. But again, I think that that's, I personally think that that's a management issue, not a, not a board issue. So if, if we have a master calendar that says when events are, you can give SORDA two weeks' notice. And if it's, and if event is happening on a, on a Saturday or a Sunday, I mean, I don't want to be restrictive to tell a coach that they can't practice before, they can't practice after six because the pass is going to cut off. We don't, let me clarify, let me clarify, Michael, let me put a question in here. Do we pay any extra to cut the passes off on a Saturday or a Sunday? Or is the, is the rate a flat rate for the contract with SORDA?
It's currently a flat rate. And so SORDA has shared with us that, well, we play, pay a fat, a flat rate for the regular pass, and then we pay an activity pass rate for the activity pass. So there is one rate for the passes back and forth to school, and then there is the different rate that we pay for the activity pass, but it's a flat rate for the entire year. So SORDA, SORDA will really do whatever, they will accommodate us, however, we ask them to accommodate us. So if it's a Saturday and Sunday, if it's a school day, they, they're, they will do what we are asking them to do. And so it's really at the will of the board what happens with the passes and the times. What we've recommended so far as a part of the contract has really been from the feedback from the board, and that's how we got to this stage.
So I just want to clarify, like I'm, like I'm in, you know, just a little younger. The passes, our contract with SORDA is for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at the rate that we're paying.
At the rate that we're paying right now, because of the times that we have given them, there is a cutoff time for students that are not on activity passes.
Correct.
However, there is not an additional fee if we, as the district said, that we wanted the passes to be open 24 hours, seven days a week.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Superintendent, just to make sure, you mentioned giving notice to SORDA two weeks ahead of time. Let's say we get into an event where there is a sporting event and they have not contacted SORDA, will we run into any issues with children not being able to get the bus to their particular practice or competition?
So, so we, we have to have some level of consistency, one way or the other for SORDA. One of the things that they have communicated with us, that we have found this to be true in working with our team, is they've not turned students away, but we do, we do need to be consistent with them, because when they are, you know, they're, they're generally the same drivers or many of the same drivers during the week, but there are different drivers on the weekends that may not always know our students. So we are, we will work with our team to make sure they communicate as much as possible. The timeline that we've given in terms of communication to make sure there isn't a challenge is that two-week timeline. But, you know, we can operate in terms of emergency, we want to make that the exception, though, not the rule, so that we're able to communicate with them appropriately.
Thank you. That would just be my concern, is having our students turned away.
Thank you. Any other?
I have one more question.
Vice President Jones, when appropriate, I would love to go, but no rush.
Okay, hold on a second, Mr. Lindy. Dr. Moffett?
Is it possible to control the passes school by school? Or is it just, does it have to be a blanket?
It, it does have to be a blanket at this point.
President Lindy?
Thanks, Vice President Jones. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Thank you. For the superintendent, I wanted to say first, just thank you for all of your work on this. You know, this was before you, you, I think, maybe had even applied for this job in the first place. But if we rewind the clock a year ago, this was just a huge set of challenges that we were facing as a district and as a city. And what I wanted to try to do is share a couple of reasons why I think this is a good plan for this year and just check with you that I'm right, not missing anything, and then see if there's anything you would add. Does that work okay?
Yes.
So as I look at the proposal, I think it's a big win that it looks like there will be no students with more than one transfer. I absolutely hear your caveat that we can't know that for sure, but based on everything we've done, it certainly looks like there will be no more than one transfer. Second, I think real work has been done to make sure students show up on time so that they're not arriving just as the first bell is ringing and then they're late, or that they're needing to leave class early in order to catch their bus. But my understanding is there's been some real progress on that. Third, I, I think that you've established just a genuine, good faith, working relationship with Metro, I think, to get these items in place. And in my sense is that that, that working relationship will also help tackle challenges as they arise. And I'm sure there will be challenges that arise. And then lastly, we've moved seventh and eighth graders off of Metro entirely and onto yellow bus, with, with the activities exception that we were discussing earlier. So that, to the extent that there are challenges, it'll be felt in a much smaller set of students. So I, I just, I wanted to name those because that feels like real progress to me, but I also wanted to check to make sure I was hearing that right and there wasn't anything else that you would want to add.
Thank you. From, from our perspective and from what, what we have reviewed, all of the areas, the